This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, September 27, 2022. Roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Kubaki.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yep.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
Trustee Flukie.
Yeah.
And trustee Service.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Move for proof is presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number five, action on open and closed minutes from August 23rd, 2022.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and a second to approve both those sets of minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take any action at this meeting. Is there anybody in the audience or online that would like to speak of anything not on the agenda? Anything not on the agenda. Okay, moving on. Number seven, written communications and/or announcements. I do have a communication. There's a proclamation that I received in the email. It is white cane safety day coming up, so I would like to read the proclamation in the written communication. "The Village of Ashwabanan proclamation recognizing white cane safety day, whereas blindness and severe visual impairment affect approximately 100,000 Wisconsin residents. And whereas the majority of these persons use travel aids such as a white cane or a service animal to get around public streets and sidewalks and places of public accommodation. And whereas these travel aids are universally recognized as symbols representing vision loss. And whereas, Wisconsin's white cane law requires that motorists come to a full stop before approaching closer than 10 feet to a pedestrian who is using a white cane or a service animal. And whereas, greater awareness of the white cane law leads to safer, more attentive driving in general, enhancing the safety of all pedestrians, including children, elders, and people with disabilities. Now therefore, Mary Kardowski, village president hereby proclaims Saturday, October 15, 2022, as White Cane Safety Day in the Village of Ashwabanan and also acknowledges the importance of pedestrian safety year round." Dated on this 27th day of September, 2022. So, anybody else have any other communications?
I don't know if there's a communication or not, but I was wondering, has there been any resolution on the roundabout on Main Street? I think I've mentioned this for two years. You know.
Can address that, Steve.
Could we have a report at the next meeting? I think it needs a formal report after being this long. Two of those were taken care of, I understand that, and they look good. But that one out there, is that ours, or is that DePierre's, or whose is that?
It is DePierre's.
Yeah, it is DePierre's, and they've been notified again that those two island flower beds are theirs as well. So it's just a matter of them scheduling resources to remove the vegetation that are in those two planting beds.
Well, I think they've ordered Snowfall, because I think that will cover it.
Yeah.
You know, wow. It's amazing. But, oh, it's not a big thing, but it's a thing. I'm not the only trustee who's gotten some complaints on it either. And so with that, you know, maybe we should just send our own crews there and take care of it?
Yep, we can certainly do that with the direction of the board, and then we can figure out how to handle that with the city of DePierre just for that purpose. But I want to make it clear to DePierre that that is not our responsibility going forward. So I don't want to take on that responsibility.
Absolutely not. No, I agree 100%. It's their responsibility, but it's, you know, it's kind of a gateway. One of the gateways into Ashwabanan, and it's going to get more and more busy. And, you know, they took care of the two, and I thought, holy crap, we've got some progress. But the progress apparently, well, anyway. Enough said. I have no further comments.
Okay. Any other communications or announcements? Hearing none, we'll move to eight. Action on consent agenda. Eight A, action on change of agent stakes, Inc., DBA Prime Quarter Steakhouse, Jed Blahowiak. Eight B, action on the operator's licenses. C, budgeted expenditures. D, general fund financial report, August year-to-date. E, investment report. And F, department report. I either need a motion to approve, or if anybody would like any of them taken.
Motion to approve is presented.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Number nine, action items. Nine A, action on appeal of denied operator's license, Toni Seehafer. Okay. Chris. Oh, Patrick, I'm sorry.
Thanks, Mary. So Toni Seehafer applied for an operator's license, obviously, in Ashwabanan, and was denied based on the fact that she was one bartender at D2, I believe, as well as she was cited for battery and disorderly conduct and was given a municipal citation. She was denied at committee based on those pending citations still being active, and was brought forward for the board based on that to have those pending citations resolved. I met with Ms. Seehafer a few weeks ago to discuss the incident, and I can tell the board that Ms. Seehafer was very forthcoming and candid and very apologetic about the incident that happened. And without getting too much into details of the incident, I can report to the board that it was somewhat of an issue that happened at the D2 bar where Ms. Seehafer was working. I reviewed the evidence. I looked at the security footage, and I think that it was not as alarming as it may have seemed for the citations. Ms. Seehafer did resolve the matter. It is open. I can share with the board that she did plead no contest to the disorderly conduct. The battery was dismissed. So with that, I think there's a lot of mitigating circumstances that Ms. Seehafer has done since then, and I think she would like to share some of her insights with that.
Well, thank you for your time, first of all. It's embarrassing to be here. It's not me. It's not my character. I am nervous, so bear with me. Basically, that night what happened isn't me, and I'm looking to move forward. With that being said, I have taken full responsibility for the disorderly conduct that I have received. I've also quit D2. I have no contact with Rob Soick or Kate Darcy. I'm looking to move forward, and I enjoy bartending. I'm hoping you guys can allow me to continue to do that.
So before the board, I guess, just in my opinion, what can we look for at the board is what I would say earlier as mitigating circumstances. What has Ms. Seehafer done since the citation? Has she made amends? Has she taken responsibility or ownership for her actions? I guess in my opinion to the board, I think that she certainly has with just how one-on-one we have met and what she's kind of stated to me. I can tell the board, I don't believe that the incident that happened was necessarily wasn't a fight by any means. However, I do think that the disorderly conduct what did cause or could have caused a disturbance. So with that said, I think that her leaving the bar, as well as not having any other communication with the individuals that worked there, that she shared that with me, as well as quitting, I think those are some steps forward that where the board could look at and approve the license for Ms. Seehafer. And just, Ms. Seehafer, can you just describe, I guess, your background and your employment status as well?
Like as far as like D2 or as a nurse?
Nurse.
Okay. I've been a nurse for seven years now, and I bartend on the side because I like nice things, and I'm very independent. And, I don't know, what else do you want me to say?
Well, I guess, going on that, I know she shared with me that there was, that she still has her RN, her license. And I looked up Ms. Seehafer's background. There isn't any other prior convictions or pending charges at this time, regardless if it was municipal or circuit court.
Is there a particular bar that you're looking, where are you planning on bartending?
Um, well, I was looking at Burcals, but I don't know if I necessarily want to be in the district. I'm still debating that. And Doozy's reached out to me and asked if I wanted to bartend there. So I guess keeping my options open. I do like Packer game days. I've done it for, I don't know, three and a half years. So to just give it up, it's kind of sad. And I've been a bartender for a very long time, so I don't want one bad incident to ruin it.
Patrick, can I just clarify what you said? So the two charges, disorderly conduct and the battery, are still pending, or you have worked through those, and one is dismissed and one, she pleaded no contest? Or where is it in the process with those?
Yeah, I apologize if I was not as clear. The battery was dismissed. She pleaded no contest to the disorderly conduct.
Chair in the Public Works of Protection meeting, the only reason we denied it, she did not go to court. And she was here trying to overturn it then, but knowing that she had to go to court, we denied it, and then we told her that she could come back here in front of the board. Talked to staff this afternoon. I don't have any problem on giving her permission to move on with her future in the bartending business. It really wasn't alcohol-related as far as herself, even though it was in a tavern. So if there's no other questions, I'll move to approve the liquor license that she's trying to obtain from the Village of Ashwabanan.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the appeal of the denied operator's license for Toni Seehafer. Are there any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, nine B, action on Class A beer/Class A liquor license request for Indian Head Oil LLC DBA Holiday Station Store, 2746518.
Mary, I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion or vote on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Chris.
So this convenience store is asking for a Class A beer/Class A liquor license. The Class A is when you go and purchase and go away. You don't consume on premise. So the village hasn't approved any convenience stores in the village to have the Class A liquor portion, which is any intoxicating liquor, including wine. So what Protection, Public Works and Protection Committee talked about was the Class A beer and then Class A liquor, but cider only. And that's what the convenience stores have in the village. And I know he is here to talk if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions about this? Like Chris said, we don't have any liquor stores in the village that have a Class A liquor. They only have the cider and the Class A beer. So if somebody wants to make a motion...
I make a motion to approve the beer and cider, Class A beer and cider license, but not the Class A liquor license.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Class A beer and the cider license, but not the Class A liquor. Everybody understands?
Yep.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Nine C, village board chambers audio vision system. Jeremy.
Good evening. Before you, we've got several proposals for upgrading the audio/visual equipment in the village boardroom. It's been a project that we've been kind of working on for about two or three years now. Majority of the equipment, especially in the video production area, is no longer supported, so we have to rely on sites like eBay and things for replacement parts. We met with a couple of user groups of the room to best determine what their needs are and came up with these proposals, those solutions. Some of the highlights in this proposal include obviously replacing the old analog system that's in there with a new digital system. We'd have a new laser or bulbous projector, new 4K cameras for recording the meetings. The trustees would actually have new 17-inch monitors at the dais that do share between trustees, new wireless mics, microphones. We'd also have an enhanced wireless share presentation, so when outside groups or groups are using the presentation room, they wouldn't have to worry about the HDMI hookups or VGA and things like that. We can share wirelessly, similar to what we have in the other conference rooms. Also new production equipment. And allows for options for streaming via Facebook, YouTube, things like that. The other thing that is included in these proposals are a assistive listening system for the room. We currently don't have one right there right now. We also did price out a hearing loop system. That came in around like $12,000. That's something we could always add on later if we decide to. But for now, we're proposing just to go with the FM Wi-Fi listening system. We did receive three quotes from Camera Corner, CEC, Northern Sound and Video. At this time, we'd recommend to work with Camera Corner. They actually manage our existing Navy equipment as well as throughout the buildings. This project was earmarked as a potential ARPA funds project back in 2021, so the funds would be taken out of that account and not impact our current tax levy. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
I do have to tell you, Jeremy, I shared this with Joel the other day. When I first saw this quote come through, I looked at the first page and I went, wow, $3,500 bucks for this whole audio system? That's not really bad, but that was only on page one. By the time I got through page 18, it was much more.
Jeremy, I know technology is changing lightning quick and that type of thing, but any projection on how long these upgrades will service without going to another major overall?
It's hard to say, but I'd say at least a good five, 10 years. We're planning at least 10 years for this equipment. It all depends on where we want to take it with streaming, things like that. We are going to put in the 4K cameras, so that'll get us up to the next level. It's just a matter of the end users, how long, you know, till they get to the capabilities of having 4K to be viewing that, like on YouTube and things like that. That's still probably a good five years out, so.
And I know Camera Corner has been serving us, and, you know, my recall is that they've always done a good job, or at least a fairly good job. Your experiences with them have been?
Yeah, I've had no issues with them. They're in town. They're able to service things in a decent amount of time. I've had no issues with dealing with, working with them on other projects.
And I noticed the quotes, too. The other quotes were significantly higher, so that was kind of interesting.
Yep, CEC is a little bit higher. They actually, they have an office in Green Bay, but most of their techs work out of Madison, Milwaukee. So if there are issues, we have to bring them up from those areas. So there's a cost, and there's also a timing factor as well. Northern Sound and Video was kind of in the same ballpark as Camera Corner, but they're in town. There's only a few people that work there. So at least at Camera Corner, we've got a wide range of techs to work with as well, so.
Thank you.
Jeremy, one of the questions I had was around the servicing. You were just touching on it. Now, does this also include like a service contract going forward then, where they're going to help maintain, do annual maintenance, do upgrades, things like that? Or is that still something that's going to fall in your play?
There's actually a separate maintenance agreement that we'd be going into. We'd be looking at a five-year maintenance agreement. That's not part of this quote. We're actually just going to roll it into our IT budget. Most of the equipment's either good, well, most of the warranty equipment's either good for three, one to three years, depending on the equipment. They're willing to go for five years, and then we can renew the contract after that. But that would cover firmware updates, software updates, in case equipment fails. So we actually get a couple extra years out of, especially those equipment that end three years. If that fails, they automatically replace that. So that's not included as part of these quotes. That's just a separate one that would be under our maintenance in our IT budget.
Is there a difference in price and maintenance between those three companies?
Not too much. I mean, it's, they're all pretty similar. There wasn't much difference between all three of them.
Okay.
Well, you wouldn't really want to go with XYZ company if you've got A company for a maintenance program, because you bought the equipment from them. So it's common sense to stay with Camera Corner.
No, my question was, is the maintenance on, like for Camera Corner, this much higher than this company, and therefore their quote, even though it looks lower, their maintenance that they're charging every year is a lot higher? Which, I've seen that in the past. That's where my question's coming from.
Right. We've separated that out, so we've just, we're just looking at the base for the install, the labor charges, things like that for the equipment. And then we looked at maintenance stuff as a separate quote, but we didn't bring that to the village board, as we want to...
That's fine.
What company do we want to go with first? And then we'll figure out the maintenance after that. We did get some initial quotes, but looking at the initial quotes between Northern Sound and Video, CEC, Camera Corner, they're all relatively the same. Not all of them have five years. Some of them only have one or two years. So that's just a matter of what we want to decide after that, so.
Is this the original system in here?
Parts are. The video production system is probably original. I know that we did, I think back when Steve was administrator, we did an audio upgrade back then. That was 2008. Okay, so.
And that was very painful.
Yeah. But yeah, so there's some parts that are original, some parts have been upgraded in 2008, so.
All right. The grand total is the number of 95,000 plus?
Correct.
Is that the right number I'm looking at?
Right. And we had, I think, about 100,000 roughly earmarked or budgeted in the ARPUs for this project. So we're a little bit under that.
We're under budget, then?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Jeremy, this came up at Finance and Personnel. In the quote, it talks about if there's any like carpet that needs to be removed or walls that need to be, you know, go through that, we would be responsible for that. But you had explained that you didn't feel there was going to be much of that, and if so, who would take care of that?
Right. I don't believe so, because all the wire runs are kind of already there. If we were going to do like the hearing loop, we'd have to pull up carpet tiles, but those are pretty easy just to stick back down. As far as cost, I would imagine that would come out of building funds, the replacement funds. But I don't anticipate that we're going to have drywall that has to get repaired. The TV would be coming down. I'm just trying to think. We're going to be using the existing amounts for projectors, the screen, everything like that. So I don't anticipate that we're going to have any holes that would have to be patched up. We do have a couple guys that are on site that do a lot of the maintenance work in the village hall, so I don't think that we'd have to contract anything out if, for some reason, it would happen. I don't anticipate any concrete saw cuts or anything like that. I think it's just a standard verbiage that they put a lot of that, and that, you know, that that company is actually going to come back and try to repair damage that they create. So the good news is we have, we do have a lot of existing channels that we can just run cables through, so it's not like we have to make new holes, things like that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Okay.
If not, I make a motion to approve as presented and recommended.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Camera Corner connecting point quote in the amount of 95,66131. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Nine D, action regarding concept proposed professional services agreement with E-Plan Exam for delegated state building plan review and inspection. Here.
All right, thank you. For those of you who are familiar with the building process and the state process, all building plans for commercial building in the village do have to get submitted to the State Department of Safety and Professional Services for review. That process takes typically six to eight weeks for plan review. The plans are reviewed by professional engineers, architects, fire safety professionals at the state DSPS agency. There's been a significant backlog of projects at DSPS over the last few years. As a result of that, a group or a company called E-Plan Exam was founded. And what they do is they basically take the process in partnership with the state. The state is supportive of their efforts, and what's called delegate the municipality to take on the plan reviews themselves. So in this case, if we become a delegated municipality with E-Plan Exam, E-Plan Exam actually takes on the review and approval of the state building plans in place of the State Department of Safety and Professional Services. One of the major advantages here is that they guarantee review within 15 days, 15 business days, as opposed to six to eight weeks. One of the major complaints that we do hear from builders, developers, is the time it takes for the state to review the plans. E-Plan Exam does work with a total of, I believe it's 12, they're currently fully delegated with 12 Wisconsin municipalities. They are based out of Milwaukee or Waukesha area. They range from the Village of Lake Delton, for those who are familiar with Wisconsin Dells area, very tourist-heavy, commercial location. City of Waukesha, large community. Locally, they work with City of Surgeon Bay and the City of Kokona for a full delegation. And full delegation means that E-Plan Exam, and therefore the village, can't perform plan review for any size building. So there are some limitations on other municipalities that are delegated, that they can't review buildings much larger than, say, a Starbucks. We would not have that limitation. So there's a definite upside there as well. In terms of cost, the cost for E-Plan Exam is paid for by the applicant. E-Plan Exam uses the same state review fee schedule that the State Department of Safety and Professional Services uses, so there's no increase in cost to the applicant or there's any cost to the village. In fact, there is actually a 10% reimbursement that E-Plan Exam provides to the local municipality to cover administrative expenses out of that state plan review fee. So there's a benefit to the village there as well. In terms of options, if for some reason a building permit applicant, a building plan review applicant, just really wants to go to the state for plan review, they still can. That's completely within their option, their purview to do that. Likewise, if for some reason we decide as a village that, you know what, this delegation process and working with E-Plan Exam just isn't working out, we can go back to just requiring state plan review for all plans without any financial consequence to the village. So I do have DA Maddox online. DA is the principal with E-Plan Exam. I also have Katie Lima here. Katie is our senior building inspector for electrical purposes. And Katie talked to me about this. She said, we really need to take a look at this. And I appreciate her bringing this to my attention. But if you have any questions, I guess technical questions as far as our local plan review, Katie would be the person to answer those. As far as E-Plan Exam, DA is on the line. So if you have any questions for him, he'd be happy to answer them as well.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And thank you for the introduction. And I think of all of our communities who've ever given us an introduction, you hit it spot on, right on the head for everything you said. Absolutely thank you for that. But yeah, if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to help.
Aaron or Katie, how many complaints are you getting from the developers that it's taking too much time? You know, I see some of the loops and things they got to run through here with the village, much less with the state. So can you give us a little synopsis of what you go through with the developers?
Yeah, honestly, over the course of any commercial project, I receive at minimum one complaint about the state, literally for every single project, whether it's during the plan review process, or during the inspection process, or just trying to contact the state at all for questions during the project. Most every project, we get some form of complaint.
I've been involved in a couple of the developers here, and I know they were not happy that the state is moving so slow. What their reasons are, it's all his people, but it doesn't help the developer. but it doesn't help the developer who wants to get going. So I think it's a good plan. Knowing we have financial issues, I think it's one way if we can make a couple bucks, which would help generate some money. It's not huge, but it's something, so.
Aaron, did you say that we have the ability to use the state program if we deem that appropriate rather than this within the context of the agreement?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Thank you.
Katie?
Real quick, if I may expand upon that to help assist, the entire program is a program of choice. You, as a community, have the choice to send an applicant to the state at any point in time. Likewise, the applicant can choose which route they want to go. If it goes to the state, you have to ultimately accept that. But likewise, you can always send them to the state if you don't want it to go through us.
You're guaranteeing this 15-day process that you have?
Yep. It is something that, when we founded the company, it's our belief it shouldn't take that long to actually do the reviews. And we have never, in the last three years, 20 million square foot reviewed, 1,000 plans, ever exceeded the 15 business days, and we have never sacrificed on safety. Matter of fact, and Katie can testify to this as well, today she has zero visibility into the state's operations. Once you were to go down this path, you will have complete visibility into our operations and you can assist us with any review as well. If you have comments, if you have thoughts, if you have things that need to get picked up, you'd have that control and that visibility as well. So I'm very comfortable in giving that warranty and guarantee that we do not exceed that because we haven't. And it's my intention that we never will. That's something that we want as a customer service aspect to get the review comments in front of developers and get them to be very comprehensive so we get these buildings built, but we do it in a safe manner.
Katie, is that visibility an advantage to you?
Definitely. For example, I'll get a plan review in from the state saying this project's ready to issue permit. We knew nothing about it. And now we then have to send them through our site plan review committee as well, which then could take up to another two to four weeks. So us knowing on the front end what projects are coming, we could get them started on that path right away as well. And then if we know any history or unique insight to the building, we could provide that upfront to E-Plan and their reviewers rather than waiting, not knowing about the project till last minute, which could then set them back even further. So having this insight, knowing what projects are coming, would be extremely helpful to us.
To facilitate the communication as well with Katie and the team, as part of our proposal, we do have free unlimited co-counsels to the inspection team, to the Village team, as well as to anyone seeking to develop within the Village limits. So that way, it helps encourage that communication on all parties, too.
Do you have any customers in the immediate area of the Schwabonan area?
I mean, the closest ones are the City of Appleton, the City of Kekona, and the City of Sturgeon Bay. And the funny thing is, if you were to go down this path of getting full delegation across the board, you'll, on paper, have more powers for plan review and inspection than the City of Green Bay, which, last time I checked, I'm pretty sure is in top five cities in the state. So you would have a definite developmental advantage. But yeah, Appleton, Kekona, and Sturgeon Bay are the closest proximity to you. But we do operate as far as way as on Alaska and obviously down by the Illinois border as well.
How many inspectors and architects and that do you have on staff right now? And what is your typical backlog of projects?
Absolutely. So one of the big things is you have full visibility into what we have currently on the books all times. We got, I think, eight projects in today. But realistically, we're caught up on Fireline for Sprinkler to basically end of last week, plumbing to the week prior, and building projects. I think we... I arrow this one right now as 10 business days out. We currently have a staff size of 12. That being said, I actually just issued a offer to hire on another master plumber for plumbing plan review. Part of what the state just did is create a new system to allow for the reduction of total materials used for plumbing systems in apartment buildings. As of today, there are only nine individuals who've been trained by the state to do this review. I had one already on staff that could do it. It's called the IATMO Plumbing System Sizing. I'm securing another one, so that way it just makes it a lot simpler for us to actually do those reviews. And all of our communities likewise would be able to do that. My understanding is, as of today, I believe Green Bay can do those reviews. The City of Madison cannot. This would also give you that authority, too. That's what we have currently on staff.
Katie, can you tell me if this E-Plan will put more work on your staff or take work off your staff?
So upfront, our workload... On the surface, our workload doesn't change at all because we don't do any of these reviews. But once permits are issued and we're out in the field, in theory, it should lessen our work in the sense of communication because we will be able to communicate directly with them rather than trying to get an email to the state. And believe it or not, the communication even to us local inspectors can take up to two weeks for us to get a response. So our workload doesn't really change surface level, but headache-wise would help immensely.
Then I have a question on liability, and maybe Patrick, you can answer this. So if we work with E-Plan, they're approving a plan, something goes wrong with the building, who would be liable for that?
Right. So we kind of discussed that. We had the initial meeting regarding this. Now, the fine print really hasn't been gone through regarding the contract language. But assuming that the Village becomes delegated to issue those, that authority, the liability would shift between E-Plan and the Village.
Yep.
So that is kind of the risk that, right, this process has where, you know, we kind of assume that liability. The odds of that, you know, with how efficient everything is and regarding the plan review, I would say it's very minimal that we have liability. But it is there. There is that risk that we assume when we go through this plan.
Will you be running that past our insurance carrier to determine whether or not or how that fits into our program with our insurance carrier?
That can be certainly looked into, sure.
Yeah, we would need to identify with them specifically that we are a delegated community so that it does include coverage within our general liability policy.
Okay. Very good.
If it helps as well, our standard operating procedure is to always name our municipal partners as named insured on our policy, too. So we'll be happy to work with the Village on any insurance and risk mitigation measures. Apologies for that.
So DA, you are not considered like a subcontractor for the state, then? You are an independent business that's doing these inspections or doing the reviews. Is that correct?
We are an independent business and LLC that we consider our partners predominantly the municipalities that we work with directly. That being said, we have very regular and very reliable contact within the state of Wisconsin itself. Katie described waiting for answers for two weeks. We just got the City of Pittsburgh delegated in two hours after making submission. The state's recognized that this is a backlog and they're trying to shed it. And even though we're not contracted with the state, we work with them in partnership. We extend out of branches every chance we can. And the wonderful nature about this program is I actually have to cut a check for the plan reviews that I do back to the state of Wisconsin. We call it unofficially the tax for the privilege of doing their work. It's a little bit humorous in this, but it's one of those things of, you can't make this stuff up anymore, but we do have a very good working relationship with them because our business model relies upon them not coming in and saying, "You're done." And that's the last thing we want. We want to maintain that efficiency and maintain that consistency between the state and ourselves.
That sounds good. That was one thing I was worried about, how they felt about you guys doing this work and basically taking work off their plate, which they're not getting to in a timely manner anyway. So I'm glad to hear that you have a good relationship with them.
They cash my checks.
You know, it comes down to a situation where the state is understaffed in these particular areas and understaffed and underbudgeted. And with that, you know, they see this as being something that can help them out as they go forward because I've worked with some of those people at the state level, and they are overwhelmed.
Yep.
I just want to add one more quick item to this. As part of the delegation process, we will need to go through our building code and fire code and make sure that they are updated, consistent with state statutes. DA and his group have already kind of done a quick run-through on that, which has been a huge help. But if we decide to go down this path, we will bring through amendments to our building code as well as our fire code. Just kind of give you a heads up on that.
So Aaron, do those changes have to be made regardless? If we do all the changes and we don't go with them, do we have to switch everything back again or make a major change or?
No, these are changes that really need to be done anyway.
Okay.
It deals a lot with our cross-references. You know, we still have references to COM code instead of the SPS code. And there's also just some... we have some conflicts in our codes as well that need to be addressed.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the professional services agreement in concept with E-Plan Exam for code review amendment. Commercial plan delegation from the state and commercial inspection delegation from the state pending Village attorney review of the agreement.
And presentation back to the board?
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, we'd bring the final contract back to the board for approval.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the service agreement with E-Plan Exam. Is there any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, DA.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
You, too. 9E, Update and Action on Rejection of PRF Maintenance Building Bid. That would be David and Joel and/or...
All right. As you guys probably know, we've been trying to get a maintenance shed built out at a Schwabonay Park. This is something that we have worked with McMahon and Associates on to put together specs. Bids were actually sent out in May, and they were received and opened in June for the new maintenance storage building. This is out at Schwabonay Park, replacing the current building that we already have out there. There was budgeted $368,000 using ARPA funds for this project. If you guys have seen the current building out there, it's currently sitting on dirt with no utilities, no electric, water. It's not on a concrete slab. There's actually gaps between the walls and the dirt. As we're getting more and more, especially events out there, we're using that facility more for storage. The issue that's coming up is with the dirt floor. Every time we've got to pull something out of there, it needs to be cleaned up. If it rains, it's an area that gets muddy under there. Putting things away at 10:30 at night, you have to use your cellphone for light. There is a beaver that lives in that shed or near it, which can kind of startle you when you're looking around using your cellphone flashlight. So we're in dire need of a new building out there. Unfortunately, when those bids came back, they did come back way over what was budgeted. We only received two bids for that project. The lowest bid was $476,950. The other one was significantly higher at $531,000. We're looking for a 40 by 80 facility out there, which is big enough to accommodate what we already have, plus planning for future growth, as we're hoping to use that park more for different special events in the future. So I guess what we believe to be the issue was the timing of when the bids were received by May or June. A lot of the places were already filled up with work for the summer and for the year, which is why we believe that we only received two bids, and the bids that we received were significantly higher than we expected. Our proposal, I guess, is to officially reject those bids and rebid this project this winter, looking to do so around the holidays or early January. Hopefully come back with new pricing for January Village Board. But like I said, hopefully, if we do it around that time, we can get on somebody's schedule, get a better price, or even have more bids so it's a little bit more competitive.
If anybody's ever been out there, David, you didn't tell a lie at all. It's as scary... they should make it a haunted house, maybe. It is everything of what he said it is. I've been in there a couple times, and you'll meet some new friends in there, like he said, and they happen to be all four-legged friends.
Well, I think it's the... that's the Schwabonan Zoo, isn't it? I think it's the Schwabonan Zoo. I think there's more creatures in there.
Very good. Very good one, Jay.
Yeah.
So, all right, I'll make a motion to not accept the bids and move forward into spring.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reject the bids for the park and rec... and forestry maintenance building. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Can I have one question, though? Greg, how long are these ARPA funds available? I just need to refresh my memory.
2024.
2024, was that it?
We have until December 31st, 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 9F, Consider Discuss Act on Ordinance Number 09-1-22 amending Section 9-1-1 Chapter 9 Criminal Code, Article 1, Miscellaneous Offenses Municipal Code relating to scrap metal and forgery. Mr. Patrick?
This is a request from Public Safety to adopt a couple more state statutes into the municipal code for enforcement. The first one is the purchase and sale of certain scrap metal. That's under Section State Statute 134.405. Basically, what this does is, how I look at it, is kind of like a pawn shop for scrap metal. Typically, a lot of times what happened is scrap metal can be stolen, and while the person who stole the scrap metal could be prosecuted either at municipal level or the state level, the dealer or the buyer of the scrap metal can be a little bit difficult to prosecute. Adopting this ordinance effectively gives Public Safety a mechanism enforcing certain restrictions and abiding by procedures that Public Safety can enforce. So let's put into an example of the catalytic converter. Both thefts have been certainly on the rise. Now, again, the person who stole the catalytic converter can be prosecuted, but also, under this, the buyer of that could be prosecuted as well, again, either at the municipal level or at the state level. This really just gives a discretion for Public Safety to either send it up to the state for criminal charges or issuing a ticket. As well as what this section or statute allows is that Public Safety can require buyers of scrap metal to have detailed transactions, license plates, driver's license numbers, phone numbers, and itemize all the items that they're selling. Again, similar to what pawn shops have to do within the Village. So that's the first adoption that's being requested. The second, on page two of the table under this, down at the bottom, where it says forgery, under State Section... excuse me, State Statute 943.38, we have adopted in the Village Code right now subsection three. What I did was, at the request of Public Safety, just essentially removed subsection three. So in this case, less is more. And what this effectively does is adopt the entire forgery statute under 943.38. This allows Public Safety more mechanisms and enforcement tools to regulate and cite the individuals who are committing forgery. Fake money, let's say, for example, someone goes to QuickTrip and buys something with fake money, this allows them to enforce it forces at the municipal level. I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
There's no questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that... Excuse me.
I'll make a motion that, excuse me, we approve the amending of section 911 of chapter nine criminal code, article one miscellaneous offenses municipal code relating to scrap metal and forgery.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 09-1-22. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Number 9G, consider discuss act on ordinance number 09-2-22 repealing and recreating section 463, chapter six business, article 12 mobile food establishments of the village of Ashwabon municipal code relating to food truck revisions. Mr. Legal.
This village staff has met considerably on this, on the mobile food trucks, just kind of revising and what we had ideas, what we could implement in the code to make it more efficient. What we've seen, looking through the food truck code for the last several months, is a lot of maybe inconsistencies and these changes that we're presenting in the, in the food truck code, not only fixes maybe a couple grammatical errors, but as well as provides some more consistency across the board for village staff, for individuals who are operating with a food truck, as well as making some exceptions for that. We've also had a lot of discussion with the Brown County Health Department, have received their input and what their kind of regulations are and what they do to inspect the food trucks. So the items here presented, I think, just cleans up a lot of maybe issues or not necessarily problems, but like I said, inconsistencies or fills in the gaps with some issues that we might have seen the last few months.
At committee, we had a long discussion on this. It was funny, today, whenever it was, it'll make a difference in time. It's funny, the food trucks in other areas are parked permanently. They are in front of bars, especially bars is where I noticed them in other communities where they do not move. You know, what we've got here is something where they have to move when they're done with their day or evening, or not preparations, but their evening services and they got to move on and do certain items. Some complaints I had from a couple people is the cost of it, which the cost is now reasonable that they can accept the charges. So what staff has done here, I think, has been a great benefit to the village so that we do not see them parked permanently like I've been seeing in other, even in our village here, there's a few parked permanently that now have to move. So I think they did a good job here, I don't see any problem with this. There's no other questions, I'll move to approve this presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 09-2-22. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9H, consider discuss act on ordinance 09-3-22, amending section 7-6-204 of chapter seven routes designated, article six heavy traffic routes of the village of Ashwabon Municipal Code. Mr. Legal.
Last year, the, the heavy traffic route ordinance was updated and accidentally removed Ashland Avenue access road. That needs to be put back in, that was requested and this is cleaning up the, the error. So the only amendment is adding back in Ashland Avenue access road.
I would make a motion to approve ordinance 09-3-22, amending section 7-6-204 of chapters 20, of chapter seven routes designated, article six heavy traffic routes of the village of Ashwabon Municipal Code as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 09-3-22. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9I, consider discuss act on ordinance number 09-4-22, amending section 127 parent E of chapter three alcohol beverages, article two license of the village of Ashwabon Municipal Code. Mr. Legal.
The, well, excuse me, this ordinance allows the village clerk to issue operators licenses without going to the village board. There will still be a thorough background check by the clerk and Department of Public Safety. Now pending that is approved, the clerk's office, according to this ordinance, would allow them to just issue the alcohol license or the operator's license without coming to the board as, as you typically see with the consent agenda. The state statutes allow the board to do that, or excuse me, allow the clerk's office to do this with approval from the board. If there are any operators' licenses that are denied, that operator applicant still has the opportunity to appeal that to committee and then ultimately the village board, somewhat similar to what we saw with Missy Haver. So essentially, the only time that you'll see an operator's license is if it's on appeal, when the department or the clerk's office recommended denial. This is an easier and a more efficient way to grant operators' licenses and certainly saves time.
Yeah, we talked about this at, at the committee and, I mean, we were only receiving a report that was informational anyway of all the ones that were approved, we didn't act on them. So they can just take care of that and if there are denials, those are the ones we see.
This makes a lot of sense from an efficiency perspective.
Right.
And I would make a motion to approve ordinance number 09-4-22 as presented.
Second. Motion and a second to approve ordinance number 09-4-22. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. 9J, consider discuss act on resolution R9-2-22, resolution approving the business fee schedule for mobile food establishments in the village of Ashwabon. Mr. Legal.
The ordinance of the food truck right now had the license at $500 and the reduction of $350, I believe, if you are a food-based business. What the proposal in the updated ordinance would be is to send the, the license fee according to the business fee schedule and then updated by resolution for the village board. As Gary, as you mentioned earlier, there was some discussion that we've had amongst staff and for certainly from views of the public, that the fee might be somewhat high. So the staff came to a consensus, well, what would possibly be a good fee? And we aligned it with what the direct seller's permit is right now, which is $350 for the license. So this is similar to the direct seller's permit. The license renewal is obviously the same at $350. The, the slight reduction would be the food-based business. So if you have a brick and mortar restaurant, you have a, a benefit of having a reduced food truck fee or food truck license fee in, in the village.
So the food-based business would still be an annual license as well? So they would pay $200 each year instead of the 350?
Correct. You still do the license renewal, exactly, yes. At $200, thank you.
What do our neighbors charge? Green Bay, DePere, Hallway?
Good question.
I'm glad we dropped it from the 500 to the 350, but.
Excuse me just a minute, if, if we're gonna have conversation, we'd need to, we'll need to open the floor, which is fine, if you want to open the floor, somebody.
Motion to open the floor. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the floor, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Could you come up to the table and state your name and address for the record, please?
Shelley Schreder.
Sean Schmidt.
Pull the mics up to you so we can hear you. Pull the mics up to you so you can hear us.
523 Morris Ave.
Okay, so you operate in Green Bay?
Yep, and Ashwabon right now. We just purchased a $500 permit to park on private land only. Otherwise, as of right now, you cannot park on private unless you have a $500 permit. Green Bay, you can park on private without a permit and then park on the streets for an additional $50 a year.
I guess just real quick, all right, sorry sir, I forgot your name. Are you saying that, Sean, are you saying that you cannot, you, on your understanding, you cannot park in the village streets?
You cannot park in the village of Ashwabon streets at all. And you actually can't even sell on a private property in Ashwabon without a $500 permit, even.
That's what we were told.
Miscommunication with that. You certainly can, if, sir, I mean, if you did get the license from the village, you absolutely can sell on the street as long as you're legally parked. So the parking regulations are still following by state statute as well as the, the parking regulations of the municipal code, but as long as you are abiding by regular parking laws, you can certainly park and sell on the street. You just can't park overnight and be there permanently.
Yeah.
That's not where we were.
Yeah, we were told different and we just bought this last week.
Certainly if there's any questions with the food truck interpretation, just call our office and Chris and I can certainly chat with you about that.
So right now, they can't be in residential?
Residential areas, yes. I'm, I'm sorry, is that, commercial districts only?
Yeah, so there was really no map of where you can park, like if you look at Green Bay, they have a map of where you can park every day if you want, from certain times, obviously. But Ashwabon has no map of actually where food trucks can park, which would be kind of nice to have. So we know where to park, so we're not legally parking somewhere and, you know, a lot of apartment complexes request to have a food truck parked outside their apartment complex in Green Bay. As of right now, we can't do that in Ashwabon.
The commercial diversification, though, is significantly different between the city of Green Bay and in Ashwabon. Our streets are on many major thoroughfares that serve the community. So what, what applies in Green Bay doesn't necessarily apply in Ashwabon.
But there are a lot of apartment complexes not a major city street.
Under the updated code, there is an exemption that we implemented or that we added and obviously now voted on, that you are allowed to park at a private residence during an event, provided you receive permission from that property owner.
Yep.
Just for a point of clarification, so the, the ordinance amending the code that regulates the items that we're discussing on the floor has technically already been adopted by the board tonight. So we can certainly take feedback on that issue and then bring back an amendment, amended ordinance or for Robert, from a Roberts rules perspective, you can reconsider your prior action on the ordinance that you've adopted. So the point of order tonight, or at least at this point on the agenda, is you're amending the fee schedule as it associates with the license. So I just want to make sure that we're not kind of muddying the waters on the action items. So if you, my recommendation would be tackle the fee issue, if that's okay. If you would like to reconsider the ordinance amendment that you've already adopted tonight, you can do that through an appropriate parliamentary procedure and reconsidering that, that prior action.
And I don't think that would be appropriate for tonight. We would have to spend much more dialogue on that as we go forward and maybe refer that back to committee. I think you're correct, we should be talking about the fee itself and only the fee because that's the agenda item we're talking about right now.
Right.
I agree with what both of yous are saying, but I think it would be good to have a, at another time, Patrick, have discussions with people like him to find out what rules and regulations are, or you can find that out yourself, much less have a discussion with him, I'm sure. So it'd be good to gather more information on what.
Yeah, maybe send it back to staff to give us a comparison between surrounding committee, surrounding communities and what their rules are and also develop a map, like he was saying, of where they can park.
I'm glad this was brought up because I thought for some time that we were very unfair to the mobile food group out there as a village compared to other municipalities, either around here or, or as I've traveled. And yeah, I think we, we need more discussion on this and maybe be a little more business friendly to these folks.
I guess, I guess if I could, again, just for a point of clarification, if you would like, because it sounds like there's some, some concern about maybe the amended ordinance that was already adopted tonight, my recommendation for the board would be to postpone action on the resolution. I would recommend if, if we're going to be coming back again through committee or board with a revised amended ordinance, maybe, and this is Patrick, kind of Patrick's route, maybe reconsider action on the ordinance for tonight's meeting and then direct staff to run that through committee once more and then bring back some of that additional data. So ultimately, if you're uncomfortable with the ordinance that you adopted, you would want to reconsider that action because you're, you're basically adopting that ordinance, it would go into effect. If you're comfortable with the ordinance as it is right now, I would recommend adopting the A resolution establishing the fees because the amended ordinance does the fee schedule by resolution, but still have the direction for staff to come back with another revised amended ordinance for, through committee to board in the coming weeks, if not months. So you, we're getting into muddy waters a little bit.
I'll move to reconsider the, the action.
So action needs to be taken on the, the fee schedule first and then we move to reconsider the ordinance.
I would, I would make a motion to approve the fee schedule for the food trucks.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution R9-2-22 about the fee schedule for food trucks. Now, with that said, is it cleaner to adopt that and then go back and reconsider the ordinance? Or is it cleaner to just not adopt the fee schedule and reconsider the ordinance and bring it all back next month?
Mary, if I may, Sean and ma'am, what's your name again?
Shelley.
Shelley. Did you have an objection as to how the ordinance was actually written, the proposed ordinance changes? Or my understanding is you just got your license fee of $500 or you just paid for it. If this fee goes down to 350, you will, you will be reimbursed. Is that your main concern?
That's what they told us.
Okay, was that your main concern tonight or?
It was both.
No, it was both.
Okay.
I should have stepped up before when you guys were talking about it.
I just wanted to make sure that.
I got a little shy.
Okay, that's okay, just wanted to make sure we're not, we're just being efficient.
It was both.
You see how popular food trucks are in Ashwabon just by, you know, at Ashwabon this summer, how many people showed up to go eat there, you know? Thousands of people are eating at these food trucks. They've become so popular in Green Bay and Ashwabon. I think the fee at 350 is even kind of high for any food truck. Like I said, Green Bay is 50, a lot of the other towns around and cities are 50. Howard is free. They're, they're really liking food trucks there.
Okay, so what's the cleanest way to do this?
I think we gotta look at the whole thing.
Well, but we have, we are, right now, we're dealing with the fees. So we have a motion and a second, so we gotta.
But we haven't approved it yet.
No, we haven't, but we have to figure out what's the cleanest way. Should we adopt it and then bring it all back?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna look to Chris and Patrick a little bit. I guess my recommendation is if there's a strong sentiment amongst the board to reconsider the ordinance, I would withdraw the motion to consider the resolution. Then my recommendation would be to make a motion to postpone action on item J, so as to reconsider action on item, and I'm going back here, so just bear with me, G on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
So that would be your motion. So first, we would need the individuals that moved to approve the resolution to rescind their, their action. And then someone on the board would need to make a motion to postpone action on item J, so as to reconsider action on item G. And then we can go back into the deliberation on item G on the amendment, amended ordinance. That's, that's my recommendation, but Patrick, Chris, I guess whatever's easier for you to follow.
As long as there's a motion to reconsider the already adopted motion, approved motion, that's fine.
Correct.
Okay.
So first one would be postponing the fee.
So who made that motion?
Me. Okay, I would rescind my motion to postponed, postponed adoption of resolution, ordinance number 09-2-22.
I'm sorry, it needs to be a motion to postpone the resolution.
Okay, postpone the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone resolution R9-2-22. How do you understand this? How do you understand this process here? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried, okay? Now, we need.
Now, essentially, the board, if it so desires, can make a motion to reconsider action on item G, which is an ordinance amending the food truck license. If that is, if that passes successfully, then you can basically reopen debate on that item and make a different motion that was previously adopted earlier this evening.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
I think the clerk has a question or point of clarification.
I guess I just have a comment. I mean, the staff knows how much we've met on this, and went over this and over this. If we could refer back, maybe? And, I mean, we need to get the boards what they're looking at, but the things that they're asking for and what we've talked about, we really have to discuss.
Right, I think the action to reconsider action tonight doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to be adopting a revised ordinance than what was proposed.
Okay.
If the board is inclined, you would reconsider your action, basically removing adoption of the ordinance tonight. And then, second to that, based on Chris's comments and feedback, if you would like to refer that back to staff, to then bring that back through committee and board, we can do that at that time. So, the first point of order would be, where are we at? Reconsider the action, right?
Yep, we did that.
That's done, we have a motion and a second on that, so I think there's a vote pending for reconsidering item G.
No.
No.
No, there wasn't.
We didn't get that far.
We didn't get that far, okay.
We need a motion to reconsider item G.
That's what I was starting to do.
Can I clarify something quick before we go there? The ordinance that we passed, and maybe we can't even discuss it because we've gone through this, and please cut me off if we can't. But my understanding of the ordinance we passed, if these folks are coming to the Ashwabamay Blast, they do not have to get a license in the Village of Ashwabanan, because it's an Ashwabanan-sponsored event. So, if you have a license in Green Bay, that would cover here. Is that correct, Patrick?
Not, no.
No.
So, they, now Sean and Sherry can certainly go to the blast or the food truck rallies. They can certainly go to Green Bay if they're licensed in Green Bay. But if they need to, if they want to operate outside of the blast and the food truck rallies in the village, they'd still need a separate village license.
Right, I'm sorry, I was trying to say, if they were just coming for an Ashwabanan-based event, then you would not need a license in Ashwabanan. You know, I think maybe a good thing to do would be to have you guys sit down with Chris and Patrick, and we just approve the ordinance, so that they understand it and say, maybe some of the things you're saying are really actually in there already. And then, we're not rescinding everything and starting over and having staff go back, because I know you guys have worked on it for a long time. And maybe there's just, you're not understanding because this just was approved tonight. And maybe there's some things in there that you're like, okay, I got it, that it is okay now, so.
Yeah, it appears the points are the dollar amount for the license, and then having a map of where they can have their food truck. And I think the ordinance that has been adopted already, you guys have put a lot of time and effort into it. You know, I think at face value, I think it has significant merit. But I, you know, I think we need to take a look at the dollar amount. And, you know, that's part of the ordinance, per se. And then, the map is something we can do procedurally without having any board action whatsoever, for all practical purposes.
Yeah, if I could, just, again, just to make sure we're clear, and that for record-keeping purposes for minutes, what we're debating is a motion that doesn't currently exist. So, what we want is a motion to reconsider action. Then, you debate that motion as you are doing now, because you're kind of debating whether or not there's a valid point to even reconsider it, right? And then, if there's enough debate, you can take, and you can deny the action that's being requested to reconsider it. If it's denied, the ordinance as amended tonight stands, and you can move back to item J, if that makes sense.
So, we need a motion to reconsider item G.
Correct.
I think there was.
And then, we can discuss it.
Move to reconsider item G.
Second.
Motion and a second to reconsider item G. Okay, now, under discussion. So, do we want to rescind or reconsider the ordinance? Because like Tracy said, there was a lot of meetings put into this food truck ordinance, and.
And there were considerable conversations about what other municipalities are doing in relation to their mobile food truck licensing. We spoke about Green Bay. Our original ordinance was actually, in fact, modeled after Green Bay's ordinance, of which I think Patrick actually wrote when he was there. He cringes a little bit. They have since relaxed considerably a lot of their licensing requirements since that time. It was our understanding, from a staff perspective, that there are concerns as it relates to the number of brick-and-mortar establishments in the community and the prevalent use of mobile food trucks in our community, and the impact that that may have on our existing brick-and-mortar establishments. And so, that was, I think, the basis, anyway, my understanding, the intent of the fee structure was that it was a higher fee structure to support that brick-and-mortar establishment, because they're paying property taxes. And mobile food trucks are, to some degree, transient, and they're not necessarily based in Ashwabanan and are not paying the same types of property taxes that the brick-and-mortar is. Just to kind of go into some of the why behind the rules that we were proposing as part of the amendment, the fee structure that you're talking about under item J is directly tied to the direct seller's value. So, we wanted, we see consistencies. If I'm selling Packer apparel on Packer Game Day, I'm paying the same license fee as if I'm selling street corn in my mobile food truck, right? The licenses is the same from a fee standpoint. Regardless of what I'm selling, I'm selling directly to vendors or to consumers on the street, if you will, or within property. We did create exclusions within the ordinance to allow for mobile food truck fairs to occur at village-sponsored events that do not require a formal license. And the thought process there is that we are formally inviting these mobile food trucks to our events specifically for that date or a series of dates. And because of that, oftentimes, they're paying a fee into the event anyway. We require, or we check the same provisions, or we should be anyway, that a license would require. So, because we're inviting them in and they're paying a fee to us for those dates, that's all they're eligible for. But if they wanted to operate within the community over that calendar year or that licensing period, they would pay the $350. We did clear up some language as it relates to concerns that we received from some trustees about whether or not these establishments can park and stay stationary for an extended period of time. Hence, we have that no parking provision and that removal provision within our code overnight, so that they go back to their service base, again, to avoid some of those conditions that we have. So, that, kind of in a nutshell, are some of the bigger issues. Operationally, where this stemmed from is that we noticed as staff collectively across multiple departments inconsistencies with how the code was being administered and the policies therein. So, what we wanted to do is work together collectively as staff so that we could create those consistencies, and the messaging can be clear and concise to the licensees that are seeking that license.
I'm a little concerned, I guess, that if these people don't have a bricks-and-mortar building in Ashwabanan, they're going to pay $500 to have their food truck here. And in Green Bay, it's $50?
Yeah.
I mean, that just seems so disparate.
Depending on the resolution of the fee schedule, the proposal right now is $350, because it's aligned with the direct seller's permit. So, it was $500, as it stands, right now, it is still $500. And Sean and Sherry did pay $500. What we propose tonight is reducing that to $350, because it's the same as you would pay for a direct seller's permit. So, as Joel said, you're selling Packer apparel on game day, or are you, I'm not sure what your food, what kind of, what you sell.
Barbecue.
Right, so it's similar to what you pay as if you're operating a food truck and selling barbecue. So, Sean and Sherry would get a refund for the amount that they paid. I know you don't have a brick-and-mortar?
No, we just had a food hub.
Many years ago, when the food truck was originally proposed here in Ashwabanan, the concern was having brick-and-mortars. So, you know, if they have to pay $500 for their food truck license, you know, and they do barbecue out of a food truck, Mission Barbecue pays a lot more in property tax. So, that was kind of the thought process as to protect some of the brick-and-mortar stores also.
I struggle with that one in protecting one industry or group of businesses. It'd be, we've had this conversation in the past with all the chain gas station, you know, quick trips coming in. And I think we've had this conversation in the past somewhat about shutting down some of our small businesses. To be able to decide who you're going to protect and not to protect is a slippery slope to me, because there's other small business owners in this community that aren't afforded that same protection. I know one very personally. So, that's, yeah, I struggle with that one.
And I shouldn't use the wording, Chris, that's protect the brick-and-mortar. What it is, is recognizing that the brick-and, the people that are in the brick-and-mortar stores are paying a lot more than $500 a year in property tax. So, that is, you know, and we have a lot of restaurants within our village. So, that is why it was put at, and I'm not saying that it should stay at 500. I recognize that a lot of municipalities are reducing their fees, but I'm just saying that that's, that was, that was the thought process back then.
Trustee Flukie was saying that there are a lot of intricacies to the fee schedule and exceptions and things like that. Are we confident they have the right fee for what they want to do? I'm just wondering, is the problem that the fee is so much higher than the surrounding communities? Or is it the problem that they didn't get the right? Maybe they didn't take advantage of an exception that they can or something?
I don't, I don't know that they would have an exception. I mean, the fee for a food truck license is $500. And, you know, the item that we just postponed was changing that to $350. But if you are at a village-sponsored event, so the food truck rallies at Ashwabamay, the blast, then you don't have to be licensed in the village because you're paying a fee to go into that food truck rally. That was the, it's a village-sponsored event, so.
So, if we were to pay that fee, would we, would you guys contact the people that actually paid the fee for that year? First dibs on being in these events?
I don't know how, I don't know how Rex does the food truck rallies. That's something run through Park and Rec.
I think that'd be nice, too. If we're going to pay the fee for Ashwabanan, maybe the food trucks that actually paid the fee for Ashwabanan should maybe get asked first to be in that event.
Yeah, I, that's different.
Right, so it's a little bit separate, because it's going to be dependent on each individual, I guess, food truck rally or sponsored event. But at the same time, there's an exception to the fee because they are invited to the event. And I guess, in your situation, you would have to be paying the fee and, to go to the event and be licensed.
So, yeah, and how I would look at that is, so, our special events, our food truck rallies, let's say we have five or six dates. The fee that you're paying to that is to participate in that event, right? So, you're paying an event fee. Doesn't, under this provided code, doesn't require separate licensing because you're invited to that, but you're paying a fee to participate in that. Now, to operate outside of that, any dates outside of that special event, you're now paying a license fee to be licensed to operate within the, you know, within the regulations of the code, but at any point throughout the community. So, there's not, you're paying to participate in the event, which then allows you to, obviously, prepare and produce food and sales and revenues. And so, that's kind of separate from the code. It's, that's where that exclusion comes in, because, again, you're invited for that particular event. You wouldn't necessarily need to be licensed in the village if you're only planning to participate in those food truck rallies. My understanding, and David can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but generally speaking, the Parks and Rec Forestry Department for their food truck rallies works directly with the Food Truck Coalition.
Yeah, we're in that.
Yeah, and so, the Food Truck Coalition kind of coordinates what vendors are going to be more or less assigned or allowed to participate, so as to have diversity in the types of food vendors that are present at the food truck rally. So, they're not, you don't have five food trucks that are all barbecue, right? There are some that are barbecue, some that are Mexican, some that are kind of burgers and brats and things of that nature. And so, there's some diversity in the options on the menu.
Well, yeah, but if you looked at the food truck rally this year at Ashwabanan, it was always the same trucks, every time you went there.
Yeah, I don't, I mean.
Yeah, because they never switched at once. Once you're in it for the, once you signed up for the rally, it was kind of like a first come, first served. So, once you're in it, it was always the same six or seven trucks. They never rotated, when there's 50-some trucks in Green Bay.
And that's something that we can give feedback to the Parks and Rec Department on, and that's something that Rex and David can work out with the Food Truck Coalition, that maybe, week to week or event to event, there's a diverse changeover in vendors.
We're kind of getting off.
Right, we're getting, we're getting off of this. And this is how this conversation goes, that's why we're trying to.
So, really, the question at hand, there's a, there is a motion on the floor to reconsider action on item G. If the board would like to reconsider that, meaning basically, more or less repeal your prior action, to then direct staff to bring the amended ordinance back through committee, we can do that. If you're comfortable with the amended ordinance as presented and approved tonight, you can deny the action that's on the table to reconsider.
You know, I know the staff did a lot of work on this, because I was in here complaining early this year about it because of getting comments about it. This gentleman here pays, will be paying $350 to come to our, to be licensed in the village. He pays a little fee to come to the food rally. And like Mary said, that's fairly reasonable price to come here and do their product versus a brick-and-mortar place. I would think we should just leave it as we discussed it and approved it, and see how it works for the next coming year. I don't want to see, staff has got a lot of other things to do besides beat up this. There's another item that we haven't discussed that hasn't been brought to the agenda yet that is a hot item in this village here. So, I think we should stay with what we got for this year, see how it works, leave it alone. And if there are changes, we can always bring it back to the board and do something, whatever was discussed, at another later time. Basically, next year is what I'm looking at.
So, what you're saying, Gary, is that the ordinance that we approved in number G, just leave it the way it is?
Leave it the way it is.
And maybe sit down with these people at some point and.
We need more information from all those people.
Can we get the information from them? And the, like, to do the map and to do the.
So, just leave it at 500?
The comparison with the surrounding communities, can we get all that without reconsidering G?
Yes.
Yes.
We can, I can prepare that or have staff prepare that.
That's not a lot of work, I'm hoping.
Just a little bit of research, just calling around and gathering data.
Okay, because I know, I know how much work they got into this thing, you know?
So, there's a motion and a second to reconsider.
To reconsider.
Reconsider, right. So, the vote would, yeah.
Or I can withdraw that motion.
There you go.
You, I guess theoretically, could withdraw the motion as well, and then separate, next, I'm sorry?
Who made the motion can withdraw.
Yeah, yep.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Who was the second?
Was it me? I don't remember, I don't remember.
Chris, do you have that?
I didn't hear the second. Who was the second? I didn't hear the second. Who was the second?
It might have been.
Who was the second?
Who was the second to reconsider?
I moved.
Chris.
Oh, Chris, yeah. That's right.
Oh, was it?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, withdraw the motion to reconsider.
I did.
Do I need a second then? Okay, a second then.
Okay.
So clarification then. So we're going to leave it the way it is. So that means that because we did not approve the fees in the other motion, then where are we at with that? Do we have to go back to that now?
Yes, correct. So now, because you postponed action on that to reconsider Item G, now you're back at Item J.
Fees, yes.
The fees, yes.
Yes. So now we're at fees.
So would it be appropriate to have a motion to refer back to committee for review based on information provided by staff as discussed tonight?
If that's what you're proposing, yes, you can. That would be my motion.
I guess, yeah, if I could just add one point. So if the board is noncommittal to the $350 change, my recommendation would be to make the fees in the resolution consistent with the prior ordinance then. Because if you recall, we amended our ordinance that removed the fee from the ordinance, placed them under the fee and charges schedule adopted from time to time by the board, right? We're trying to clean this up so we don't have to always amend our ordinance every time a fee change happens. So I would recommend as part of your motion that if you are referring the actual fee back to committee to adopt the resolution, but with the existing fees in the prior ordinance. So that means fees stay at $500 for non-brick-and-mortar, go down to whatever they were in the ordinance that I would need to dig out. But you're essentially reverting that back because you amended the ordinance that now requires the resolution to adopt a fee.
I was thinking that.
So, yeah. And then that gets sent back and if we adopt a new fee, then at some point...
I would just adopt this at 350 and then send it back to...
That's what I think, too.
Yeah. I think just to do it at 350 and then send it back, get these guys' input and then go forward from there.
It's very easy to bring a resolution back forward if that different recommendations are made.
Now you got it in the fee schedule, and all you got to do is change the fee schedule.
Okay.
So was there a second of Steve's? I don't think there was.
We didn't vote on it.
Was there? Okay.
I believe there was a motion and a second, right? Steve made the motion and Kelly made the second, or Jay did.
Yeah. So we'll withdraw those then?
Or you can amend yours, Steve.
I'll amend it to the 350 as presented.
So the existing resolution includes the amended fee schedule of 350, okay? If you're comfortable with that and would like us to bring back a different recommendation for a future meeting pending the results of our survey data from other municipalities, we can do that. But we will remain with as it is written today and being presented to you, the fee structure that's being proposed.
The 350.
Correct.
So that would be Resolution R 9-2-22.
Correct.
Okay.
We need a second on Steve's amended motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have Steve's motion.
Seconded by Jay.
Seconded by Jay.
To approve the...
To approve the Resolution R 9-2-222. Correct?
Which is the 350 fee.
350.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Good luck, Chris.
Okay. Everybody's got that. Everybody understands that.
I think it's most important that the clerk has it, right?
Is there a way we could approve the portion that creates the resolution so we have a fee schedule but not agree to the 350?
I think we just do it and let it come back to another resolution to change the fee schedule.
And if we're going to change it, we'll just change it. But I would just do it the way it is right now because I think Chris will be in...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, does everybody understand? It's about as clear as mud.
Yeah.
I know.
It goes to 350.
You got it, right.
Okay. Fee goes to 350, 200 on a food-based business.
So we did not approve the fee schedule, though, correct? We tabled that, did not approve it.
That's what we're...
That's what we're approving right now.
Right, but, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, Patrick. Was that you?
Oh, no. We initially postponed it, went back to, I think, G.
G. Yeah, so we're in G now, trying to decide to keep the...
No, we're past G.
So initially, we approved, or the board approved the ordinance, went to the resolution, postponed the resolution, went back to the ordinance to reconsider, now we're back to the resolution to approve as submitted. So the motion before you right now is to approve the fee as submitted in the resolution.
Got it. You lost me on that. All right.
Actually, at the end, we approve both motions of G and J. That's where we're going to end up with. Patrick? Yes. All right, all right. And then we directed staff, Steve, you directed staff to...
Well, yeah, basically, I'd like to see it go back to committee for taking a look at the fee structure and just coming back to the board with the final recommendation.
But that'll be a different...
But at this point in time, get the 350 in place and the ordinance in place, yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, now, Chris would like to say something to these. So tomorrow, I'll put in a request to get your $150 back to you. I'm not sure if that'll go to finance. I'm not sure how long it'll take, but just know I'm on it.
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution R 9-2-222, setting the fee at 350. 350 and 200.
And 200.
Yes, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, now, do we want a motion to send back to staff?
Steve, you can't do it an action item if it's not...
Yeah, I have sufficient, you know, we have sufficient direction from the board that we can do some additional research, bring this back through committee and through board.
And certainly will contact Sean and Sherry as well.
Yeah. We all got a crash course in parliamentary procedure, too.
Oh, my God. Okay.
That's the course I didn't want to take.
Okay. 9K. So this is, we're moving on from the fee schedule. Thank you very much.
They would like to be excused. Let's close the floor.
Oh, yeah, we got to close the floor.
I'll make a motion to close the floor.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Exactly. They're probably going straight to the bar. We should try to go with them.
Going straight to the bar, upstate of view.
Thank you. Okay, we closed the floor. So you guys are more than...
So how are you going to get ahold of us for talking?
Pardon me?
You said you want to discuss stuff in a later day, maybe?
Sure. Staff will work on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're the only food truck that's scheduled here anyway, Scrapyard Smoker Barbecue for the license. So you should be able to get ahold of us, too, there, right?
I have other licenses.
Oh, you do?
I think she gave us the license.
Oh, yeah, you are the only that gave us it.
Told you it was coming.
All right. All right, thank you.
9K, Action on Resolution R 9-1-222 in recognition of Kurt Witinski and Gail Sumi in the village of Ashwabanan, Brown County, Wisconsin. Okay, so we were asked by the league, anybody who's been a member of the league for a long time knows that Kurt Witinski has been the league head lobbyist for many, many years. He is retiring at the end of the year, and Gail Sumi has been their social media person for, I think, nine or 11 years. So they're both retiring, and they ask that we do a resolution in honor of them that will be presented to them at the October conference. So I need a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion to approve Resolution Number R 9-1-222.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Resolution R 9-1-222. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. 9L, Letter of Support to Close GBCI. This was presented by Representative Steffen, and I will let Joel take that.
Thank you. So about a week ago, we had our HALO meeting, if you're familiar with that. The communities of Howard, Hobart, the Oneida Nation, Lawrence, Ashwabanan, and to some degree, Pulaski, get together monthly to meet. The item on the agenda that this past month was the closure of the Green Bay Correctional Institute, which you maybe have heard in the news over the last few years. The village of Aloe, along with some state representatives and senators, have been pushing the closure of that facility for a variety of reasons, namely because it is severely outdated, requires significant maintenance, it is overpopulated. There are a variety of reasons for the requested decommissioning of GBCI. And then secondarily to that, obviously, there's an opportunity from an economic development standpoint, should that prison close, they could convert the site, respecting the National Registry of Historic Places, and redevelop it into some type of mixed-use development. The letter that's being proposed for consideration for the board to authorize the president to sign on behalf of the village is in support of that closure. Representative Steffen believes that this is an opportune time to petition our gubernatorial candidates, both Governor Evers and challenger Tim Michaels, to support and sponsor that effort to close GBCI. And so this letter of support would go to both gubernatorial candidates for the hopeful thought process that they may on the campaign trail promise the closure of that facility. So the action tonight is to authorize the president for support of that signature.
Okay. As I said today to someone else, GBCI back in the 1980s was well over capacity. And now, it was originally built for 750 people. They have over 1,100 people in there. So there's a lot of issues. I did talk to Dave Steffen either this morning or yesterday. I don't, they have a couple of different plans. I don't know exactly what those plans are, but maybe if you can get somebody to commit to looking, seriously looking at moving some of the people in there, that something will be done with moving. Because it is not, it's not safe for the residents in there. It's not safe for the personnel that's working there. So, and if that was a facility within our jurisdiction, I would like Aloe to support us. So, anyway, so. Anybody want to make a motion?
Just question first. I didn't notice it anywhere, just out of curiosity. Did they address placement of current employees if that were all go-forward?
If a new facility, when I talked to Dave just today or yesterday, if they did build a new facility, he said that the current employees would transfer to that facility. So...
My recall is that there was significant discussion about privatizing it and putting it into a private sector scenario. And some states have done that with differing successes. With that, this seems to be a resolution without a solution. I would support GBCI being phased out, but I also would like to know what a solution would be relative to what are their plans to replace it. You know, there are many different options or alternatives. And the point that Chris brought up is, you know, if they would privatize that, you know, these employees might be offered positions at this privatized scenario, but without benefits that they may be receiving currently. So with that, I think there's still more questions that need to be addressed and answered before I would support anything like this.
From what I understand, Steve, even when they were talking about privatizing it, it was a facility that would be built with private funds by a private company, but the staff would still be employed by the state, and the state would actually lease it from the private company. That is what was a couple of years ago. So I guess the resolution or the letter is just to support their idea of closing it. And I agree that, you know, it was a concern of what are you going to do if you close it? But I don't think that with 1,100 residents in there, you can't close it without having a plan.
Well, that's what I mean. I'm kind of, I've got a half-baked plan here from my perspective. If I came forward with this type of plan to you as a city, as a village board, you'd probably be looking at me like I'm half crazy. If I did not have a total plan that would say, okay, if we're going to close it here, this is what we're going to do here. I agree the legislature needs to get together with the governor, and they need to come up with a solution. But I don't feel comfortable in carte blanche saying GBCI needs to be eliminated. And I agree that it does need to be eliminated, but I want to see the other half of the solution. And that's not, that's not there in any fashion or format.
Steve, I 100% understand what you're saying, and I agree with all those concerns. But I think this is just taking that first step forward. There's going to be a lot of discussion and voting on every step along the way, I think, before anything really, you know, comes to fruition on those points. I think this just, I support this. I think it just kind of helps push it. It's just spinning wheels right now, and something's got to happen.
Yeah, I think the last paragraph kind of answers that. It's more looking into it more and creating a vision for the future of Wisconsin's correctional system. So I don't think they're looking at in this memo saying we have hard best solution here. This is saying, we really want and encourage the state to get involved in this and see what we can come up with for a solution for this problem, is how I would read that letter.
That's how I read it, too. I don't, I think we're just saying, we support the direction you're heading. And really, all we're doing is giving permission for Mary to sign a letter tonight, right?
Yeah. And the letter that's provided to you was a template that was given to us from Administrator Brad Lang and Representative Steffen. So we can certainly alter the letter too and include certain language that may be more applicable to the desires of the board. I will also state, and I'm not trying to get into the politics behind it, but there was provisions in the last biennial budget that included $5 million towards studying the effects and like beginning the process of closure of GBCI and what that would look like. Through line item vetoes, the governor changed that. They kept the $5 million in the budget, but it was reallocated towards other correctional issues, not towards the closure of GBCI. So the legislature ultimately, according to Steffen and the Republican Caucus, would like the governor to include provisions within the next biennial budget that would then study and review and answer the questions that Trustee Kabakie is mentioning, is that what does that mean? Does that mean privatization? Does it mean relocation? Does it mean the construction and development of another system, so on and so forth? And so they're just looking for commitment by that next gubernatorial individual to say, yes, we are going to effectively look towards closing and decommissioning that site.
I understand where you're coming from. And I still think it's too open-ended. And it is incumbent upon the governor and the legislature to get their stuff together and address the prison issues that are out there. I agree that this facility should be closed at some point in time, but I just am apprehensive relative to the solution with truly the end product because it's not anywhere where I can get ahold of it. But I understand.
Well, Steve, I understand your concerns because, you know, the facility is old, overcrowded, not up to date to the standard that we've brought this country up to. And I've got Relation working there, and I hear some stories that are not pretty stories. But Steve, you mentioned, Joel, you mentioned some of the provisions we could put in that letter concerning Steve's concerns. So Steve, would you go along with something like that, then?
I would go along with that, yes, sir.
You know, then let's... You know, I, then, let's, let's, let's just run with that, and, and Steve, if you'd be so kind to put your concerns to the staff and put that in that provision, is that coming back to the board for an okay then, or you're just gonna shoot it through?
So this is a letter that's signed by the village president, so she's really acting on behalf of the direction of the board, so, but we can prepare it, we can certainly have...
Okay, all right.
And if Mary's feeling like it, it meets the considerations that the board has, we can, we can certainly send it that way.
All right, okay.
I agree with 75% of it, the 25% concerns me, and, and, you know, if there's, we can put a little bit of tweaking in it, you know, I, I think it needs to be done, it's just that I'm concerned about the process and coming to a solution.
We can just add language with another paragraph, right, Joel, and bring those concerns in the letter, and then I'll sign it.
You know, Steffen's made a big deal out of this a couple years ago, and all of a sudden, it went on deaf ears. We haven't heard nothing, nothing about it till this appeared in our agenda, so...
I, I, I agree, as a friendly compromise, that we can get this done, yes.
So I would move to give Mary permission to draft and sign the letter of support to close GBCI with the provisions we've discussed.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Hey, we have a motion and a second to have me sign the letter, and we will add a, a paragraph stating Steve's concerns, and then I'll sign it. Does everybody...
In a gentle, kind format.
In a gentle, kind format. Got that, Joel? A gentle, kind format. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, thank you. 9M, Halloween Trick or Treat Hours. Joel, what are our trick or treat hours? They are on Halloween.
I believe they are from 4:00 to 7:00 PM on Monday, October 31st.
There you go.
Move to approve.
Second.
That's a big one.
And a second to approve those Halloween hours. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 10, Items for Next Agenda, if there, well, we might have something on the food trucks, but we'll see. Okay, number 11, Closed Session Items. During the meeting, the village board of the village of Ashwabanen may convene into closed session pursuant, pursuant to item A, B, C, D, and E. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. Motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session, roll call please. President Kardowski? Here. Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Paul?
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
Trustee Kubaki?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie?
Yes.
Okay, we're going into closed session, thank you.
This conference is no longer being recorded.